I would like to ask you first to please stand and join us for the invocation and the pledge.
Bow with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many mercies and blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, we ask you tonight for the wisdom and the guidance to do the people's business. Father, we ask for the forgiveness of our sins. Father, we ask you to be with our first responders, with our military and our government, Father. During this time of election, we ask that you burden our hearts to go out and do our civic duty and vote for the right people that will guide this country. Father, we ask for a blessing on our country and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing that I want to do is to review the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated for each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. The next thing we have is Planning Commission announcements. And what I would like to do at this time is to let you know that there is a change in the agenda and that item ZM 5235, Big Pen Residence Manhattan Marina Rezone, will be first on the agenda. Next on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October the 4th. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? No opposition. Thank you. Okay, so this will be a public hearing at this point in time for ZM 5235. Will Ms. Leaf come forward and discuss this? This is a consideration of an application to rezone approximately one acre of upland located at 100 Manhattan Marina Drive, Conservation Preservation to Plan Development District. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Community Development Department. This is ZM 5235, Big Pen Residence and Manhattan Marina Rezone. So they are currently Conservation Preservation zoning and they are looking to rezone to Plan Development District in order to allow a single, one single family dwelling on the property and also have a 45-foot structure. So under the CP zone, the only residential that's allowed in CP would be a caretaker's quarters for one of the allowed uses, either cemetery or wildlife refuge. But other than that, there would not be a single-family home allowed. And then currently, the building height restriction in CP is 35 feet. So they're looking to increase that to 45 feet. This parcel is really on the very eastern edge of the Mainland Planning Commission's jurisdiction. So it is off of the FJ Torres Causeway on the McKay River and was a former marina. And there's currently a dilapidated structure and dock that are on the site. So in the top photo, this is just showing the zoning. So this is the CP Conservation Preservation zoning and the surrounding is mostly marsh. And so this is CP zoning as well. There is about a one-acre upland on this parcel. So that is the only area that's subject to the rezone, is the one-acre upland. And it's just an aerial map showing the property. So as you can see, there is an access road, Manhattan Marina Drive that comes in. You can only access that going eastbound on the Torres Causeway. And so you would come in off of this access drive and then enter the property. So you can see this upland area right here. So currently, as I mentioned, other conservation zoning, these are the only permitted uses that are allowed. It's pretty limited. And there are a number of conditional uses that are also allowed, you know, with a conditional use permit. Again, these are still relatively limited in terms of marina. As I mentioned cemetery before, that would allow caretaker's quarters, museum or exhibit area. So the comprehensive plan is coastal marshlands for both the future land use map and the character area map. So this is, the applicants did submit a plan development text outlining the single-family residence and the 45-foot, 45-foot height limit. And so they did, this was one of the exhibits they included in their packet. And this is a survey of the property. So we did receive from the architect some conceptual renderings that would show proposed single-family residence on the property. And so there is a few slides that will show this from different vantage points in the property. So in the top slide, you can see the Torres Causeway behind. So this is basically taken from the water, looking into the site. And then in these photos, the top one, the Torres Causeway, would be on the right of this picture. And then on the bottom photo, the Torres Causeway would be on your left. So you'd be looking eastbound towards the property. Another one, the Torres Causeway, it would be on the bottom right-hand corner, looking out towards the property, that direction. So these are your possible actions this evening. And Mr. Jim Bishop is here from Bishoploss Farm representing the applicant. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Leaf at this time?
I have a quick question. So in the current zoning, he could have a marina and could have a caretaker's as long as it wasn't 35 feet or higher? You said cemetery or something else. You didn't mention marina, but the text says marina.
Right, yeah. A marina is a conditional, conditional use permit. They can do, so under the permitted uses, without getting any, you know, conditional use permit, they can do a private, non-commercial dock or boathouse. The only residence that would be allowed as a permitted use would be if there is a wildlife refuge on the property. They could do a caretaker's quarters. Under the, under the conditional uses, a commercial marina would be allowed as a conditional use. And then a cemetery could be a conditional use. And there is a caretaker's dwelling unit that could be allowed as part of that cemetery. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bishop, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself? And I will ask you to address the commission, please.
Members of the Planning Commission, first thing I'd like to do is to tell you I appreciate very much your service to our community. It goes without saying that you all spend a lot of time, uncompensated time, spending for the betterment of our community. And I have to, have to tell you, there's some nostalgia involved in all this. When I moved to Brunswick, frankly, before many of you were born, all right? This is the first, I tried my first case in this courtroom. So it's a little, some emotion, a lot of nostalgia that I come every now and then to this. But it's my pleasure to represent Mr. Paul Bigpen, who is here and who bought this piece of property. Interestingly, Mr. Bigpen is a new resident of our community. So he called me one day and he wanted to come by and see me. And when he first approached me to do this, I said, you know, that's pretty interesting. I was familiar with Manhattan Marina. I actually represented the owners of Manhattan Marina who inherited this many years ago. And they were trying to figure out what they were going to do with it. And a young man named Michael Rogers from Atlanta ended up with it. And so he just sat there and sat there and sat there until now. And Mr. Bigpen had an idea. He came in, we talked about his idea. And I guess kind of sort of the rest is history. And I said, if we're going to do this, let's put together the best And I said, if we're going to do this, let's put together the best team that we could put together. Kind of use these, the best, listen, we're very fortunate, our community have really, really good professionals. And we started off with, and I didn't, I didn't know Kevin Higgins very well and his brother didn't know him, but I became familiar. And he's the architect, the master architect, that has done all this. And you have seen some of, most all of what he has done. It's going to be incredible development. So I assembled a team, Jonathan Roberts, who is here tonight, Chup Surveying, Gary Neville and Tible Hill, both of whom here tonight. Dan Bucy is an environmental consultant that most of us know. And since this was a very sensitive piece of property, right there on the water, an old marina, we had to have environmental, we were dealing with the DNR and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers at the same time. So we got, we had a meeting at my office. We always are very respectful of the planning process. Stephanie Leaf has been, and her staff has been absolutely terrific, as in everything else that I have done. So we have appreciated that. So, and what we've ended up with is this proposed plan that Mr. Thigpen and you all have seen is a part of the presentation tonight. Stephanie, y'all have a slide presentation, don't you? Like for you all, maybe you've all seen it. I think you have, it's been sent to you, maybe, maybe you've had a chance to look at it or not. But I think it's worth taking a look at. Yes, ma'am? Let me tell you, if you get those things up close on your computer, they look entirely different. You know, this, this, it's going to be something to behold, really. And you think, you know, you take away the aspect of a marina, although that's what it was used for years and years. And to be able to do something like this as a home for Mr. Thigpen and his family is pretty, is pretty interesting. I think it's very interesting. Anyway, we are, we do have the consultants here tonight, Jonathan Roberts. Jonathan, anything you'd like to add to all this? All right, and Chup Surveying is here tonight. Dan Bucy is not here tonight, but we've cleared with the regulators, you know, the DNR and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So we are here to answer questions. If you have questions, again, Mr. Thigpen is right here with me. He's a, he's an interesting guy. I'm happy, I'm sure, to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Bishop or Mr. Thigpen?
I have one. Mr. Bishop, has the old fuel depot and, you know, the storage tanks and that stuff been removed from this property?
Jonathan, what's going on with the old fuel tanks? The answer to that question is yes.
Let's have Jonathan come up.
Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts with Roberts Civil Engineering. We've done some investigation on the soil characteristics and soil surveys. To my knowledge, I'm not familiar with underground fuel tanks, but I'm sure that the owner has more knowledge on that. But we have done soil testing to make sure that the site is appropriate for septic. I would have to let Mr. Thigpen answer about the underground tanks.
They're above ground tanks and they're still there. So we got it lined up, we're getting the soil samples, just getting everything, make sure the place is not contaminated. And we're going to have them professionally removed. They're empty, they're just sitting there waiting for somebody to move them. Yeah, yeah, there's nothing in them. Yeah, they've been empty, I think, for 20 years, to be honest with you. So, and actually, they're still in really good shape, surprisingly. So, you know, saltwater, but if somebody wants some fuel tanks, you're welcome to them.
Will this property be on county water and sewer? Or will you have a septic tank and well there?
Yes, yes, sir. Septic and a well. We already had the samples done, they said it passed.
The Georgia Environmental?
Yeah. I apologize, I don't know all the names, but yeah, that's what we use. If you can believe this, I've never built a house before. This is the first one. I've got a lot of figuring out to do.
Well, it looks like you fixed to build one.
Yeah, I'm trying, right?
Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I got one. We're going from 35 to 45 feet. Is that what the request is, Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
This evening?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there anything? Well, there's really no precedent on the causeway as far as any buildings right now. So I was just wondering if the 35 feet, you really want the 45?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. And, and so what we will do in the, do in the public hearing is that, and you guys can take a seat at this point. What we will do during the public hearing is we will ask for those of you who are here in the chamber to come, if you are in favor of this property and you want to speak about it, please come forward, state your name and address the commission.
My name's Jeff Kilgore. I almost always am asking you to observe your own ordinances. And tonight, you move this item to the front of the agenda, which violates your ordinance. Roberts Rules of Order are incorporated in your ordinances for the conduct of this meeting. The public has a right to know the order in which these items are going to be presented. There are people who may have an interest in this application. I'm not against it. Matter of fact, just because Jim Bishop represents him, I'm probably for it. But you can't just move something to the front of the agenda legally. First of all, if you wanted to do it, you had to have a motion and a second, and you had to vote to change the agenda. And so I would ask that you, and God bless you for your service, I echo Mr. Bishop's sentiments that you volunteer to spend your time. But, but please look and be mindful of the people's interest when you are conducting, as Bill said, conducting the people's business. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project that they are interested in seeing this project move forward? All right, then I will move to the other side. Is there anyone in the chamber who is in opposition of this project? Will you come to the podium and state your name and address the commission? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve ZM 5235 as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Same here.
So the next item on our agenda is SP 5173, 330 Green Swamp Road. And it's a site plan approval for a 4,500-square-foot addition to an existing industrial building at 330 Green Swamp Road. And Mr. Postal is here for the county.
Good evening. This is a site plan approval request for a 4,500-square-foot addition to an existing industrial building on Ed and Green Swamp Road. That building is 37,400 square feet and is the site of Atlantic Engineered Products. This is the zoning map showing the section of Green Swamp Road that's all general industrial. This is the site right here. And this is the site plan showing the addition right here and the rest of the existing building right here. And recommending approval of the site plan application.
Any questions of Mr. Postal? Okay, the applicant is Mr. Rob Williamson. Would he like to come and ask us to approve his site plan?
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Bill Gross, WH Gross Construction. I'm not the owner, but I'm the applicant in this case. And so I would like to ask for approval on this. It's a really neat company that makes things that are here in America instead of overseas. It's an addition, doesn't have any, it's just a warehouse space.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Oh, we have a, excuse, excuse me. You want to, you want to take your seat because this is a public comment period for the site plan? So is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this site plan approval? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address the commission. Okay, is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this site plan approval? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address the commission.
My name's Jeff Kilgore. And, you know, I'm not a planner and so there may be some things that I'm just ignorant of or don't understand. But this item is on your agenda to be reviewed and voted on and approved. But I'm looking at the staff report and I see a number of areas that indicate not compliant, particularly drainage, which is a major issue in Glen County, as you know. And the staff report says that the inverted crown typical roadway sections are a maintenance issue and should not be proposed on new residential roadways. And I'm looking through the staff report and I don't see that that was ever resolved. Also, under engineering, there are some fairly significant comments regarding this application and non-compliance with your ordinances, particularly for traffic and issues relative to improvements that may need to be made in order to accommodate this development. And so in planning and zoning, on the second page of the staff report, which is Planning Manager Stephanie Leaf herself, and it says not compliant. Not compliant until zoning decision is made by the Board of Commissioners due to emergency close of August meeting. The rezone was renoticed. I presume that got resolved. And I understand that you're not here for a dialogue. And so I can't answer, I can't ask questions and expect an answer. But I hope you will help me understand how these non-compliance issues have been resolved before you approve the application. Thank you.
Maurice Postal Planning Staff. Mr. Kilgore must have been looking at the staff report for a different project. None of those issues pertain to this. It's just a 4,500-square-foot addition to an existing building.
I was lost. I thought I was in a different courtroom.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition of SP 5173 site plan approval? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 5173 as presented.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? That is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is another site plan approval. The name of the project is Hathaway Apartments. And it's going to be presented by Maurice Postal for the county.
Good evening. This is site plan approval request for a new 300-unit apartment complex on the parcel directly north of the I-95 Toyota. And the subject property is also adjacent to the Bergen Woods Apartment Complex, which is currently under construction. And this is the zoning map. This is Bergen Woods up here. This is I-95 Toyota down here. And this is the site plan depicting the 300-unit complex. And it is a, it is a landlocked parcel. It will need to get access easements through the I-95 Toyota property to get to the spur over here. And this is the conceptual elevations for the project, showing three-story apartment buildings. And we are recommending approval of the application.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
And this may be a better question for the applicant, but have the access, has the access been granted?
As far as I know, not yet. But there's no way that they can get building permits until they get that access because you have to have access to a public street eventually.
Okay.
We don't need to make our decision tonight contingent on obtaining that access?
You could make that condition, but I don't think it's necessary in the end because like I said, we can't grant building permits if there's no access for the project to a public street.
Any other questions of Mr. Postal? Would the applicant like to come forward? Introduce yourself and address the chamber, please.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, Mainland Planning Commission. My name is Trevor Peters with Thomason Hutton Engineering. I'm here representing the applicant and the developer for this particular project. And I am requesting your approval for the site plan that you see before you. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. One that just came up regarding the landlocked property and access to the property. Currently, the property's owner, which is Tac Real Estate, also owns the adjacent property. And there are private streets that allow access on that adjacent property to public right-of-way. So currently, the property is not landlocked at this point in time.
Any questions, Commissioners?
So is that access to those private streets, has that been recorded in the courthouse or whatever agreement they have with the current owner?
So they, currently, the purchases of the property in this sale agreement have worked out access easements in order to get them to the private road and also to the right-of-way of Golden Isles Parkway at the intersection of Kate Road. That's contingent upon the sale and then the development. But currently, right now, since it's still owned by the original owner, that's, that's not a landlocked situation.
Thank you.
But it is in writing, you said they worked out access easements. Is that something that's recorded?
No, ma'am, so it wouldn't be recorded until?
I understand it wouldn't be recorded until the sale takes place. But I just want to make sure they've got it, they have it down.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, we will see what the public has to say. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone in the? Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak against this site plan approval? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period for SP 5230 is closed. Commissioners.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5230 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda is site plan approval, SP 5170 for Half Moon Bluff. And Ms. Leaf with the county is going to present that.
So this application is SP 5170. This is Half Moon Bluff. It is a new apartment multifamily project on Andy Tostensen Road, which is off of Highway 17 South in the exit 29 area. So this is Highway 17 here. This is Andy Tostensen Road. This is a particular parcel. Initially, there had been a rezon request to amend the plan development for this, for these parcels. There are, it's one parcel that's split between two different PDs. This back portion, which is, the site plan tonight was originally, well, has multifamily. The front portion was commercial. Initially, they had looked at enlarging the multifamily parcel to accommodate more units. They had since withdrawn that rezon application, and so the site plan that's before you meets the development area of the existing PD. So the density of 16 units per acre and the boundaries that are, that are in this, in this PD are met by this site plan. So this is the proposal here. And so it is, 92 units is what they're proposing for this project. And these are their conceptual elevations. They are one-story units, mostly duplexes, as you can see here. And these are your possible motions. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Jake Hightower with Robert Civil is here representing this application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf? Okay, Mr. Hightower, would you like to come and speak on behalf of this project?
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here with Brandon Waters. He's one of the applicants as well. He's the partner with Jeff Carmichael. Y'all met Mr. Carmichael back in August when we came for the original zoning. The original zoning, like Ms. Leaf said, was to increase the amount of residential from what's existing. The existing residential PD text was approved back in January of 2002. And so at this time, since we're not going to amend the zoning, our site plan before you is 92 units on the 11 acres. And the same concept as before, just basically brought down to a smaller scale of what's already entitled, but available for any questions that y'all might have. And also ask that you approve the site plan as presented.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Carmichael? Hightower, excuse me.
Mr. Hightower, I do, I had something that was brought to my attention today, since you and I've talked. Tell me about the potential for a land dispute with this piece of property.
Yes, sir. So what we did was that whenever you're going to purchase a piece of property, you're going to get your own boundary survey and make sure that all your deeds match up. You're going to do your title searches, make sure that what you're buying is actually what you're allowed to purchase. Well, in doing so, when they originally were going to buy the full 27 acres, we did the boundary survey, and there was a potential deed overlap. And I stress potential, because that's not been, well, I'll say it's potential, because since we're not, the applicant's not closing on the full 27 acres, that's no longer in play. What they're looking at purchasing is the 11 acres. And so this right here is a sliver of about .3 acres, where that's between the owner, who is not the applicant, the owner of the property, and the adjacent owner beside them. However, regardless of how that is determined, whether it was a conflicting deed, typically how that works is that you'll go back to the eldest deed, and that's the one that takes precedent. Regardless of how that shakes out, we made sure that our project limits are the mutual line that you can see right here, and that's where we do our buffers and setbacks off of, so that no matter what, we're not... Yeah, that's just basically the, that's just the hatched area showing the difference right there. So what we did is we took the conservative approach to say, rather than say, this is what they'll purchase, and this is where it'll be part of our buffer, we're just saying, well, in the event, no matter which way that land might fall, it's not really a point for the site plan. The site plan's based on the project limits, which are based on the actual current zoning. And the current zoning for that six, for that 11 acres said it was 11.017 acres with 611 feet of frontage along Andy Tostensen Road. And so that's how we drew this parcel. So with this site plan, when they close on the property, they will close on exactly the project limits. This is, like I said, it would either go to the owner on this side or the owner who's the existing owner on this parcel. But for this project, it really does not have an implication on this site plan.
And in no way would it affect the buffer on that side?
That's correct. Everything as it states right now would stay without that at all.
How much buffer is on that side?
The Glen County ordinances of the type A modified of 12-foot of buffer with a 6-foot opaque fence. There was some question about buffers. So the commercial buffer over here, when that one, so that was a PD text that was done back in 1997. They had a 50-foot buffer, natural buffer. And that was done on this portion. And then on this portion over here was medium residential PD with the standard Glen County ordinances. And so if this, no matter what happens, this property, there's still the same amount of buffer and setbacks along this project line right here.
So just for 100% clarity, the disputed area, which is the red slash, if this property owner ends up with it, that's great. If they don't, then, and it goes to the back, the property owner behind, then it doesn't matter. The project conforms with the ordinances.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? We have no more questions of Mr. Hightower, then I will see what people in the chamber have to say.
Thank you.
If there is anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project, would you please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission, please? Please come to the podium, please. And state your name.
I am Linda Kirby, and I live in Fancy Bluff. Which side...
Ma'am, please, please.
Can you show me that layout again of that project? And show me where Andy Tostensen is? I think it's at the bottom of the page, but I'm not sure. All right, where's, right there? Okay. All right. And what is that blue, bluish gray? Yeah. Is that a lake or...? Okay. Just curious.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of this project? Please come and, yeah. Please come to the podium, state your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Bob Miller. I'm a resident of the Boykin Ridge subdivision, and I live on 166 Boykin Ridge Drive, which I think borders this. And if you could show me where my house would be, I sure would appreciate that, because I think I'm in the affected area. I don't know. If you could just identify that.
Commissioners, Jake Hightower, Robert Civil. If I may, since we're speaking about those in favor, I actually have two letters in my possession from two workforce employers in the area. Just curious if you'd like for me to read those letters.
Okay, let's, let's answer this gentleman's question first.
Okay.
That Ms. Leaf was looking for.
Thank you.
So Boykin Ridge Road is right up here. And so these, these lots are on Boykin Ridge that border the property. And so Boykin Ridge ends right here. So I'm not sure where this gentleman lives along that road. I did look at the names along here. I didn't recognize, you know, his name on, on these particular lots. But yeah, this is the Boykin Ridge neighborhood right here.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone, Mr. Hightower, I appreciate that you would like to read those letters, but I need to see, we need to continue this, this public comment period. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this site plan approval?
I have a question. So were those letters submitted to staff?
No, ma'am. They were actually submitted during the rezoning. They were submitted to the county commissioners. And so I didn't know if they'd be applicable or not. I just thought they might apply since they're for this project. But it's, we can submit them physically, or read them, or pass by, but I just figured that was something that might be helpful for speaking in favor.
I wasn't asking, I wasn't asking you not to read them. I just wanted to see if we had, I would like to finish this public comment period.
I just figured those would be part of a public comment in a way, but would you like for me to answer his question? I'm actually looking right now, and I don't see Mr. Miller. I see Mr., I see Conos, Janos, Wittemberg, Adams, and then Tostensen along the right side. Is he, he's further down? Okay, so he's, yeah, so Ms. Stephanie said that he's along the existing PD commercial section down here.
Mr. Hightower, if I may, I'm assuming that second emergency entrance is that on the left side? And is, is that sufficient just to open in a, open field that way?
Yes, sir. So when we do civil plans, the requirements by the fire department are, they have a certain width and height requirement, as well as a compaction on the, what would be a dirt road. So the way we have it drawn up is an access easement, with, which would be basically a sub, a subbase dirt road that would go around to here, to the interparcable activity up on this side. So it would service as an emergency ingress and egress. And then in the future, if there is an expansion to a commercial development, then it would be paved, or whatever the case may be.
Ultimately, that was my question, about how you would get from there to either Andy Tostensen or Highway 17 without a four-wheel-drive truck. And I mean, so that, a road will be built there.
Yes, sir. If there is an emergency access, it would be required to meet the fire department standard.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is Ingrid Metz, and I'm a resident of Satilla Shores, which is across the street on Highway 17. And I was particularly involved when they had the original plan, 23 acres, and now it's reduced to 11. And there were eight different conditions that I believe the Planning Commission stipulated for those 23 acres, like the road access and no bar, no, none of this other stuff. And those were all listed as conditions for the 23 acres. And I realized that the front is commercial, and I was told it could either be a restaurant there, or a car wash, or a hotel on the commercial in front of this planned project. So I'm concerned, what's going to happen to the other 12 acres? And are there going to be conditions placed, like an access road that they originally had by the Dairy Queen and the Exxon station? Are those still going to be imposed on the 11 acres? And obviously, many of us are concerned about the traffic, which is already bad enough, but I believe that this is much better than what had been proposed to begin with, or have it all commercial. So I'm just wondering what is going to happen and what they plan to do with the other 12 acres, or if those stipulations are going to stay in place. Thank you.
To respond to the citizen's question, so at this point, we don't have any development proposals for the additional 12 acres. So whenever they do decide what they want to do on that property, it'll either come in as a site plan that'll come before this board, or if they are looking to add some different uses or change uses, it'll come in as a rezon. So there'll be an opportunity for public comment, and the property will be posted at that time.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Okay, now we will move to the other side. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak against this project? Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is Andrew Tostensen. I know y'all got a hard job up here. I'm the one with the property dispute. And my deed that my granddaddy had back in the 50s, I had it resurveyed twice since they've surveyed it. And the marks is out on my property. I think about, I could be wrong exactly on this, about 87 foot over to two or three feet from a barn that's back there in the back. And I dispute this property line, and I just disagree with it. And I've had it surveyed, and it's right where my deed shows it's supposed to be, not where they say it is. And I want it, I want it settled before they do anything with this property. I want that property line to settle, I think, before that y'all can, you can vote on it. I wish you would defer it till we get it settled. And I'm here for any questions. All that property was one piece of property at one time, you know? And the Piles family owned it all, even what we own and that piece over on the, where they want to develop all the way up to 17, and even over there where Royal Oaks is. And Mr. Bill Piles and my granddaddy was very good friends. And he's the one helped us get that piece of property in the early 50s. So my deed's probably the oldest. I heard y'all talk about the oldest a while ago. And I hate that somebody in the 70s, 80s, or 90s come and surveyed it and surveyed it wrong, and some of the other surveyors pick it up by accident, I'm sure, because it's, I had no idea there was another line until just, you know, a few weeks ago. But I don't agree with it. I've had it surveyed, and I just want it deferred till we get it settled. Thank you.
Mr. Tostensen, before you go, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. At the very top of this site plan, it's showing 44.33 feet, and it comes down to a point at Andy Tostensen Road. Do you agree with, does your survey agree with that? Or did I hear you say that there was a larger piece that you're disputing?
Where it meets Andy Tostensen Road, I agree with that point. It's where it meets on the back, back yonder. I don't agree with it.
That's what I'm asking?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I agree with where it is on Andy Tostensen, but not at the back.
Okay.
Have you measured that, Mr. Tostensen?
You, how much land it is? I ain't got...
Have you measured the width of it in the very back?
No. I thought it was about, in where the corner is, over to where they put a mark where the corner... corner that property is. See, Boykin Ridge and the corner of my, their property in Boykin Ridge is where it sticks out. And the only pin I see, it's over there four, five feet from a building I got. It's been there for years. And I just, they, it's just off at the back. But my pin shows it's right at the back, but where theirs is, is wrong.
So for clarity, are you saying the red shaded area we looked at is the point?
I can't see it really up there from here, but if you can make it bigger where I can see it. There it was. I'm saying that back piece back there, where you see where it's the widest, I'm saying that needs to be over, over to the left, over there where that point is. I think that's where it is on the property line. But the front one on Andy Tosterson's right, it's just the other one's wrong.
Yeah, so the site plan is showing 44.33 feet. And the reason I ask the question is I wanted to, Mr. Hightower did a great job of explaining how this site plan takes into account the buffers listed in the ordinance, yet doesn't infringe on what they're saying could be the disputed parcel. But you're saying that the parcel's actually bigger than what they're saying on the site plan?
I don't quite understand what you're saying. But years ago, the commission put a buffer there because all that property was supposed to be commercial. And I think my land is planned development, commercial, commercial on the road I show. I know that's on residential. But the buffer, if I ain't badly mistaken, was supposed to be 50 or 75 feet wide on that side of our property. And was in, which they cleared, they cleared it and left the buffer there when they cleared all that property, like it's supposed to be. And it just, it's, it's not what my deed shows, I'll put it that way. And I, there's a dispute here, and I just want it settled.
Yes, sir. We understand that, Mr. Tosterson. We're sympathetic to that.
I understand.
But Mr. Hightower, with the engineering company, came and said that that development has nothing to do with disputed land.
I don't understand.
Either when the lawyer or judges get involved, they're either going to say that goes to Mr. Andy Tosterson, or that goes to whoever owns that property that's developing the property. And do you disagree with that, sir?
Well, what I disagree with, I'd like to see this settled before they go any further. But I don't understand how they can have a survey made up that they got a question with, too, when I got a deed that says it's over. I mean, I don't even want to see something like that on there.
Have you consulted an attorney? Is there attorneys involved?
No, but I've had surveyors there look at it two or three times and survey it. And I'm putting a fence up now where I say my property is. I've had it surveyed. I've had them come out there and mark it. And I'm coming down through there, and I'm putting it there every four to six inches on my property, my post. And I'm putting a fence up right now. That's what I say, that's what I'm doing. And my deed, I've had it checked two or three times, and what the deed reads, and the deed reads it's over on the left-hand side of them red marks, where if that's what they're saying, because it's sticking way out over there on my property down there. The further it gets, the further it gets off.
Do you mind me asking who surveyed your property, Mr. Tosterson?
Sam, Sam. I've had a, back when Bobby Shute was alive, he surveyed it, too. I don't know who else has surveyed it for them, or some of my family when I was younger. I got no idea who done all that surveying. But Bobby Shute surveyed it for my brother, Sammy, before I bought it from him.
Okay, I'm going to interject here and say that we realize we have a dispute.
I would like you to defer it till we get it straight. That's what I'd like be done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
To the commissioners, my name is Mance Molino. And I don't have a dispute with property lines. What I do have a dispute with is aesthetics. I am currently moving back into a house at 615 Fancy Bluff Road that we've owned, my parents owned for, since 1971. And I own five acres over on that side, and own six acres across the road. And I've noticed, you know, I don't mean to be offensive to anyone. I've noticed the Boykin ridges come in. I've noticed, but Fancy Bluff is no longer Fancy Bluff. The Tostersons, we grew up with them. We, you know, it's not what we bargained for. And I understand, this is a free country. I believe in freedoms and rights, and the ability to develop property that you own. But when I see what I saw up on the screen there, by the way, I'm just moving, I retired from Savannah on August 1st. And so I left my house there, and I'm moving back in the house down here. And it's not what I left when I went to college in 1980. Basically, it was properties that you had. You had one or two acres, and you had a house, and, or somebody has, like I said, we had five acres, and my grandparents had six acres. But now you're going to put duplexes at the front of that. Across the street is some very Royal Oaks, beautiful, you know, almost million-dollar homes over there. And you're going to put duplexes in front of that, commercial property. Now again, like I said, I don't have a property dispute, as in Mr. Tosterson's case. But, you know, and some people say, Mance, you shouldn't say anything, because it's going to make our property values go up. I don't see that. And I turn and, that's the way I come in and go home. And I got to look at duplexes. And I'm sorry, I look over there at Boykin Ridge, and it looks to me, I hate to say it, like blighted, because the houses are so close together, and they're not kept up. You know, and I, and folks, you'll go over and you'll see my property. Now, like I said, I promise you, I'm going to get the hedges and everything cut the way it's supposed to be, and the driveways and stuff redone. But I'm just saying, it's not, what I see going in there is not what Fancy Bluff was at one point in time. And that's why I'm opposed to this.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this project? Please come forward, state your name, and address the commission.
My name is Joe Kirby, and my wife was up here earlier. I live down at Stutch Road. And I realize we're looking at a lot, probably a mile from my house. But I've got the same complaint with that that I had with Boykin Ridge. I predicted that the water from Boykin Ridge is going to affect me in Fancy Bluff. I realize you all are, you're only looking at, but we're all connected. Everything down there is connected. I've lived there for 23 years. If it rains more than twice since Boykin Ridge was put in, my septic tank fills up. It fills up with water. I've got two inspection plates. Take the lid off, full of water. A week, it's gone. But the whole world down there is connected. You, you can't consider, where is this man going to get sewage from? I haven't heard anything, I mean, where is it? Today, today, there was a four-wheel tractor, wheels that big, four of them. He is stuck in the middle of Fancy Bluff Road and Highway 17. He is up to here in mud on some land that y'all are going to let somebody build something on. What happens to the sewage and the runoff water? Nobody ever seen, I don't know, they just don't seem to consider that that water's going to run somewhere. I live on the marsh, thank God. But I'm at the end of the line. I got a marsh in my backyard, swamp in my front yard, and now I got a swamp, swamp in my yard. Because the water can't go anywhere. It runs downhill. I'll be darned. Imagine that. I'm downhill from all of it. And I won't be around here long, but I've been here long enough to have enough common sense to realize the runoff water is not going anywhere. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lee, please come forward and state your name.
Hey, Sherri, how are y'all doing? My name is Gene Lee. I'm the current president of Royal Oaks Home Leadership. Pity me. I have a couple of comments. Really don't take exception to the, to what's going on. But in the county's report, where drainage, it said it's not compliant. So I would request that that be reviewed prior to making a decision. In addition, the joint water sewer condition says the, the plan is, it's the, at the time the site plan review, the conveyance capacity downstream water condition is not sufficient to support proposed development. I can tell you right now, we have a pretty serious pressure drop mid-morning to early afternoon in Royal Oaks and surrounding areas over there because of the, I think the capacity is just already there. I would, I would request that the commission defer this until those two items are corrected and/or addressed in such a manner as that the surrounding communities are not going to be infected by the influx of another X number of homes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to come forward and speak against this project? Please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none, none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Hightower. Let's talk about water and sewer. Do you have a letter from the joint water and sewer about capacity?
Yes, sir, we do. We have water and sewer availability letter. There is talk about whether or not there would be a small upgrade needed at the station across the road. Doing so, we also confirm with them that the tap fees that they would pay, in about the $500,000 range on tap fees, would help cover for the, any pump upgrades needed. But what's going to happen is that this is going to be master metered. So you can see, it's hard to read down here, but basically, we already have the water and sewer letter, which shows it's tying into the manhole right here. And then there's water also along Andy Tossenson right here with fire hydrants. And what we do for making sure the water pressure's sufficient is we do a 24-hour drawdown test, and also a pressure test, or pressure test, and then a flow test. And then we model it for the whole system. And in the event that there is anything from a fire protection standpoint, if at any point, at the farthest point, if it's, if it goes below a certain PSI for a certain volume, then we install a pump station in here to basically boost that water. But we've already cleared that with joint water and sewer, and they're compliant on their comments for those two.
Okay, tell us about engineered water runoff. What happens when you develop a subdivision, engineering-wise, for your runoff?
For runoff?
Yes, sir. Is it going to go to Mr. Tosterson or that gentleman's house? What is going to happen to the water from that project? Talk about stormwater.
Stormwater right now. So what we did is there's a pocket right here, a wetland pocket, that we're going to enlarge to make a stormwater project. And what we do is we model the system in the current state today. That's the pre-development condition. And then what we do is we have outlet control structures that basically will collect all the water from the development, and then stage discharge it out of this pond over time. And so it'll either discharge, depending on where the previous flow is, there's a, basically a kind of a breakpoint into where some goes, one way, some goes the other. And we'll basically make sure that when we discharge our water out of this pond, it's less than the pre-development condition as a runoff.
That's all the questions I have.
And I can step through some of the other comments as well, if y'all'd like, from where to.
Please.
So I guess from the very beginning, Mr. Tossenson, I understand what he's talking about. If we were to have a buffer on this piece of property, and so I've looked at the deeds where it shows, it's an arrow from his deed to this line, an arrow from another deed to this line right here, meaning that that's where that overlap is. If, if we were to show a buffer and setbacks and buildings in this disputed property, absolutely, we couldn't go forward. We cleared it with the county attorney today that since we're not, this has nothing to do with the project. This is, we're buffering off of this line like we talked about. So with Mr. Tossenson, I understand his concern on the, on the overlap, and that's to be worked out between him and Mr. Bryan. At the end of the day, like I said, this, this site plan is not taking that into account at all. Then from Mr. Molino, excuse me if I messed up your name, the aesthetics. So on the aesthetics, this is a higher-dense development. However, this, this is a rental community, so you're not going to have storage on the exterior of these, of these units. It's going to be gated. It's going to have an onsite management facility to where they will ensure that this is a clean, well-kept community. With these kinds of communities, they're in a market competition with everybody else around them. And so they have a vested interest to make sure it's a clean, well-kept community. Somebody who doesn't go by it, you kick them out. They're tenants. They're, they're renting this at market rate. So it's not like it's someone that's going to own it and can do whatever, whatever they want with their property. They're going to maintain that property. They're going to have landscaping crews make sure it's nice and clean. If you saw the example of what it looks like, it's a very nice, clean development. Then we talked about the water and sewer and the runoff from Mr. Kirby's comments, and then also from Mr. Lee with the drainage and the water and sewer as well. But also happy to answer any more questions.
Jake, is Mr. Carmichael here?
No, sir, he's not. He's out of town. But his partner, Mr. Waters, is here.
All right, may I ask a question of Mr. Waters?
Brandon Waters.
Mr. Waters, we all want to be good neighbors. I know you folks do. Apparently, it's not Mr. Tosterson's fault by any stretch, and it's not your fault. Somewhere down the line, there was a survey that was not correct. You agree with that? It's not your fault.
Yes, sir.
And it's not his fault. But in the end, you want to be good neighbors, correct?
Correct.
That little slither of land is not affecting your project in any way whatsoever? Is there any way that you could make Mr. Tosterson? I know he says that land belongs to him, and I'm sure your folks say that land belongs to you. There's not anything you can do with that land now? Can you and him come to an agreement that you could, either way, just say, hey, you know, Mr. Tosterson, that land is yours? You know, it's, I'm just, I just don't think we want to start on a bad foot with a neighbor.
Yes, sir. That is not our land. It is Mr. Bryan's land currently.
Okay, so you're purchasing the land from Mr. Bryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm asking a question to the wrong person.
Yes, sir. I will say, though, that considering the fact that he's only going to be allowed by his financial institution to purchase what is completely undisputed, he's ensuring that no matter what name falls on this little sliver, it's going to stay the same, because they're putting a development that's, that's right here. So this, so that's right, it's Mr. Bryan's land, but, but he's being, and we're trying to be good engineers and good neighbors by making sure that we're not trying to use the potentially disputed land in any way, shape, or form. That's why we're designing off of basically what Mr. Tossenson says is his landline. That way, this doesn't come up in a title issue or a legal issue.
I think, though, Jake, it would go a long way. I think, though, Jake, it would go a long way if the owner of the property would say, you know, it doesn't affect us in any way. We don't wanna go through a great, lengthy court battle. I know Mr. Tosterson doesn't want to. No business wants to do that, because you never know the outcome. You never know how much it's gonna cost.
And I will say this, that I did speak with the owner today after he spoke with Mr. Tossenson, and they two know each other, and I've spoken on the phone. And Bob called him a friend. They... I don't see this being any sort of a legal battle whatsoever. It's just that the applicant cannot close on that land, and they're not trying to. And so they're... I can say, I could call Mr. Bryan right now on the phone, and he'd say, I'm not worried about it. Like I said, they... those two, up until the survey was done, Bob Bryan thought that was Tossenson's land. So I don't see any issue whatsoever. But again, our applicant's not even gonna try to dispute it or purchase it or anything.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just... I think we have our assistant county attorney here. My concern is this gentleman came to us 90 days ago with a proposal. We... you know, that proposal did not move forward with the county commission. It was withdrawn for, I think, various reasons of lack of support. This gentleman went back to the original PD text that's been in place for a long time, has brought us a development that meets every requirement of that PD text, has created a solution that takes the disputed piece off of the table. I don't think we're lawyers. I don't think that's our job. I think our job is to gather the information, look at how it's presented. Does it bring... does it match the PD text and the ordinance, and make a decision on that. On the site plan, if there's a legal battle, there's a legal battle, but it... this, the way it's laid out, I haven't seen any proof that the disputed piece that we're talking about is any larger than this. But if it is, that's a legal battle for you guys to have. I think it's a site plan, and it meets our requirements. I don't think anybody has said it doesn't. We need to make a decision on the merit of the site plan. Thank you.
Just for America, I'm not opposed to it at all.
No, I don't think you... yeah, I don't think you are.
I'm not opposed to your project at all, and we just have questions.
Commissioners, are there any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm not opposed to this site plan either. What I will say that I'm opposed to is the way I understood Mr. Tosterson is that his... to the best of his knowledge, the parcel is larger than what you've identified in this disputed area that he owns. That is a concern for me. I understand that the site plan can't move forward until all legal questions have been answered, but I do agree that this dispute should be handled prior to this moving forward. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah. I agree with Commissioner Edie as well. We need to get it right, and we've had... we've got a survey here. We don't know exactly which one is correct. We don't know exactly... you know, until we get the survey right, it's hard to move forward with it, because as a board, we need to ask the questions, but we need to get it right as best possible. And I think we need to come back with a clear survey of whose property's what. And because I'm totally not against this project as it is, but I think we need to get the survey right, and that's for your client's benefit, Mr. Tosterson, and everyone involved.
But we're not able to see a survey.
Yeah, I mean, have y'all seen another survey? I haven't seen another survey. I've seen the one we've been given.
May I speak?
Yeah, I disagree.
The ordinances and regulations dictate that we do it based on the project boundary, and that's what we're dictating is a project boundary, which is based on the PD text from 2002, which is, it states, I've got a copy of it right here, 611 feet of frontage of Andy Tossenson Road, which is from that pen that Mr. Tossenson said he agrees with, and exactly 11.017 acres. And we also drew it based on the line that he says is his. So again, we're not... the question of this is mute. It doesn't apply to the site plan. The site plan is the project boundary, which is this line here and all the way around. Again, it's a site plan. It's not a zoning request. It's purely just to make sure that the site plan goes forward. Again, no matter what we do with the civil drawings, none of this property is being touched. And it's also zoned, basically, a different zoning than what we'd wanna use here. Were you trying to say something?
Explain that we're using his survey. It's a combination of both.
Right. Yeah. Like basically, what he was trying to say is we took off of his survey, and that's where we drew our lines. So in essence, we're making sure that there is no dispute whatsoever in terms of where the site plan's applicable to.
So the 40-some-odd feet that's in dispute in the red came from Mr. Tosterson's survey laid over your survey?
The survey takes both into account, basically.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So was that a survey he provided to you?
It was what was on record already.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve SP 5220 Walker Point, and Ms. Lee is here to present for the county.
This is SP 5220 Walker Point. This is located off of Golden Isles Parkway, north of Highway 99, just north of the intersection. It is a planned development district. The zoning... the density that's allowed on the site is 10 units per acre. So here is the property, this location. This is the Sweetwater subdivision behind here, and this is the intersection of 99 and Golden Isles Parkway. So they are proposing 105-unit multifamily residential project. This is phase one of a larger project they do plan to do, so this is their phase one for site plan. The long-term plan that they've stated has been to subdivide the property in the future, so they would be townhouse sublots, individual fee simple lots, instead of a multifamily project. So the long-term plan is to have lots created for these parcels. But right now, they are showing it as a multifamily project. These are six complexes. And so they do have an access coming off of Golden Isles Parkway. They do have an amenity center right here. They are showing a 12-foot landscape buffer, a type A buffer, along the property line that's a butt Sweetwater. And then they are showing a type E buffer adjacent to this parking lot for the amenity center, which is a requirement, because it is a parking area off of a public roadway. So these are the proposed conceptual elevations. So the front on the top, and then the rear is on the bottom of the page. Side elevations. And these are your possible actions. And Jonathan Roberts is here from Robert Civil Engineering representing the applicant. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Lee? Commissioners? Mr. Roberts, would you please come forward?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, and happy to answer any questions you might have on the application.
Commissioners, what questions do you have?
This is a phased project.
It is.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a site plan approval. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
I'm Wayne Moxley. I spoke to a couple of you guys today. I'm the owner of this project, and I just wanted to bring to you guys attention. I have several folks with me tonight that are in support of this project, including Keith Ross and Richard McKenna. I brought those two guys with me. They're friends of mine, but they are two of the largest property owners in that area. I think between them, they probably own a couple of thousand acres in that area. Richard actually owns the property that we bought, the old Coastal Pines Golf Course, and Richard actually bought part of it, and I bought part of it. And those guys are here standing in support of this project. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you. Asking you to respectfully approve my project, if you will. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition of this project? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
Hi, I'm Teresa Pagano, and I have some questions, because I really don't... I'm a resident in that area. I live across the street, a little bit up the road, and I just have some questions on what type of housing those are. Are they rentals? Are they... I know that this is a phase that he's going to be building, but I'm concerned the neighborhood in that area is very safe, it's very peaceful, and I'm concerned of what type of housing he plans to put on there.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps that question can be addressed later. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition of this
My name's John Spano. Commission, I appreciate you listening to me, and excuse my appearance. So I'm a resident of Sweetwater, and I guess what I have are more questions or concerns that I just hope are be considered. I really didn't know what to expect tonight. I maybe expected one person up here, so I'm completely unprepared. But I really just kinda hope what I have to say is considered. One of the things I don't really get, it could be my ignorance, but it seems like the project is significantly on its way, so that just right off the bat kinda stumbles me. Like, what are we here approving? I mean, they've already drained the pond or lake out front. Significant work is going on in that pond, where the excavator is like the full height of the excavator, can't even see it from the street. A lot of fill being moved. So anyway, with all that said, some of my questions and concerns, and the priorities aren't necessarily in this order, but to the point of what I've already said, with all the activity that's already out there, it would be appreciated if something's done with the dust control. They got the two commercial-sized loaders, the dump trucks. I think everyone here may know what I'm speaking of, and they're going back and forth, doing what they need to do. I don't have a gun to see how fast they go. There's no speed limit, but I have pictures. I mean, massive dust clouds, and obviously this... and like you've already announced, we're only in phase one, so you know, we're gonna be covered in dirt for however long this project's gonna take, so I better speed this up here before I get... in that view there, going across the top, I take it that's the buildings, and you can see like, I think it's like four driveways perks, I think... and I don't even think that's misleading, because is it four or five is kind of a question. But one of my bigger concerns or questions is from the rear face of that building, the rear wall of the building to the buffer, how many feet are we talking? Because looking at that, if I'm interpreting that correctly, it's basically zero. The rear of the building's gonna be right at the buffer. With the fill that's been coming from the pond and elsewhere, I'm also concerned that that whole top row, it seems like they're building the elevation, and I'm not a civil engineer, but I have concerns of the drainage issues and whatnot, because it seems like they're gonna be several feet higher than what the pre-existing elevation was, both of this property and Sweetwater. So I'm kinda concerned with all that water. Okay, got it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
It's a long list, so appreciate it.
Do we have anyone else in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address the chamber. Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, this public comment period is closed. Mr. Roberts, would you like to come back and address some of those questions?
Yes. Mission Jonathan Roberts again. The builder is a very reputable builder and does quality products. He's got a lot of recent homes that he's built in Carriage Gate, very, very nice quality. We expect nothing less on this project. As far as the technical items, there's... the buffer is not right up to the structure. There's about five feet off the back before that 12-foot vegetated buffer would begin. The stormwater plan is very far along on this project and been worked through with the county engineer, so we'll ensure that there's not negative repercussions on the neighbor's subdivision. And then on the dust control, that's duly noted, and we'll talk to the contractor about some measures to help prevent some future dust situations.
Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 5220 as presented.
Second. Do you have a motion and second? Any questions? All in favor? It is a present. The next item on our agenda is planned development. Excuse me, could we please... thank you. It's... the name of the project is 7810 Highway 82 Rezone, and it's a proposal to rezone from forest agriculture to highway commercial. And who is handling that for the county? Mr. Postal, please come forward.
The applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of 7810 Highway 82 from forest agricultural to highway commercial. The applicant's proposing to create three commercial tracks on approximately 97 acres out of that total 300-acre parcel. In the past, 125 acres of the site was used as a blueberry farm, but that farm's no longer operating. And billboards would be allowed if rezoned to highway commercial, of course. This is the zoning map showing that everything in that area near the county line is in forest This is the concept plan showing the three tracks. This is one of the commercial tracks here. This is the Okefenokee Rural Electric Solar Farm, which is on a different piece of property. This is the second one of the commercial tracks, and this is the third proposed commercial track. And this is the remainder of the 380-acre parcel. These are your options, and the agent for the property owner is here tonight.
Sir, could you get these people outside to quieten down, please? So do we have any questions of Mr. Postal?
That tax parcel's 380 acres total.
And how much are they paying?
97.
87.
97, yes.
Did they give you anything about what they're gonna do now?
No, like, the real estate agent for the property owner is here tonight, but no, I believe he wants to keep his options open, he didn't give any specifics about what are going to each one of these parts. going into each one of these parcels. I think he wants to keep them open for general commercial uses.
So just for clarity, the 97 acres is incorporated into three parcels or just the right parcel?
Yeah, this one, this is one of the proposed tracks here. This is the second one, and this is the third one.
Gotcha.
Of course, there could be retail stores, restaurants, gas stations. An RV park would be a conditional use, so they would have to come back again for both site plan approval and conditional use permit. But highway commercial has a wide variety of commercial uses.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Postal? Would Ms. Roberta Lassiter, who's representing the owner of this property, please come forward? This is her first time here.
Planning and zoning in Peach County is much smaller. This property was per-
State your, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roberta Lassiter, Coldal Banker Access Realty, and I'm representing Nicholas and Diana Beechler, the owners. This property was a blueberry farm, had 125 acres. When they purchased it, the very first year, they did pretty well with it. The second year, COVID hit, and they were not allowed to bring in workers and/or have the, you pick, blueberries. That was limited. So it did not get farmed that year, and then the next year, again. It was a lot of work for them, so it's no longer a blueberry farm. Still has plants out there, but it would take some time to get it back up. It was marketed for one year, two months, by another Realtor with no action, and then I've been marketing it for a year and a half. We have had lots and lots of interest from blueberry farmers, but they're wanting very small piece. They do not want the whole 400, well, 379 acres. So seller suggested maybe we put commercial across the road frontage and see if he can get some of it sold off that way.
Okay, I had addressed this with you earlier, what, I know you said "commercial," and you said you had, had it on the market for sale. Has anyone ever said to you, "Oh, if you had a gas station there, we might be interested," or, "Oh, if you had a restaurant there, or we might be interested in buying it?" Have you had a request for commercial?
Yes, so we, we have been approached by two individuals that were interested in putting a gas station there and a small restaurant, like a mom-and-pop restaurant, a family restaurant. And we've all had, also had someone else talking about putting a, I'm French, I talk with my hands. They wanted to put a strip mall that had just small little shops and possibly a gas station at that one also.
But right now, there's very-
We have nothing, no. We're just looking for other options to get this property sold.
Commissioner?
I'm the commissioner for that district.
Yes.
And Highway 82 is a commercial corridor, but you're asking us for a lot of commercial land to be rezoned in that area. There's forest agricultural everywhere, everything else around it is forest agricultural land. And I'm not opposed to some of it up front being highway commercial, or, but 97 acres to go to highway commercial in one sitting is a lot of land.
Right, so initially, the two parcels to the left and the right of the solar panels is what we had proposed, and the, the bigger strip, the largest part that's off to the right of the property, it's all trees and there is no blueberry, anything in there. The wells, there's two wells on the property, they're in the, they're on the other side, that just had no, no use or value to the farmers, so he just threw that in there, just so you know, the third, the third parcel.
I'm sure it's pretty close to there. There's at least one residence there, somewhere along that line, somewhere along.
Yeah, there's a mobile home across 82.
Yeah, across the way.
Yeah, and, and also Maurice, isn't there one back?
I only know it's-
Back to the east?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that. The one directly across the street's the only one that I saw, looking on GIs. You might know more about the area, of course, than I do, but I'm not sure about that section.
I, I know it was, but I have to ask the question, Maurice. Was there sufficient signage put out for this highway commercial rezone? I, I'm concerned that the people around it may not know, and-
Sure, I put a public notice sign right here at this spot on Highway 82.
Do we have any comments to county staff about any opposition or for?
No.
This kind of stuff gives me heartburn. Everybody knows, I'm for property rights. I believe you should be able to do what you want to with your property, your client should. But then again, once we zone this commercial, it's never going to go back to anything other than commercial.
So he wouldn't, he wouldn't have the option to include it with, if we did get somebody, for instance, there's a timber company right now interested in the property, but they, they are neither here nor there with that if it, if it was rezoned commercial.
All right, guys, what do y'all say?
Okay, we have to have, we have to do a public comment. Do you have something more to add?
I was just going to ask Mr. Postal, due to the size of the property, I think maybe this is what Commissioner Boatright's also speaking to, how many property owners actually had to be noticed with it being such large pieces out there?
I believe there were six.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project? If so, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak against this project, this rezone? Would you please come to the podium and state your name? Hearing none, seeing none, this public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
I personally like to say to Ms. Beechler.
Lassiter.
I'm sorry, Lassiter. I apologize.
That's all right, I did it something earlier like that.
I, I'm definitely not opposed to people doing what they want and to do with their property, as long as, you know, is, is within good taste and the ordinances. And if you had, if you had a client or a prospective buyer that said, "I want this X amount of property, and I want it zoned commercial," I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. But with no proposed uses, and just to say it's highway commercial, I do, to rezone it to highway commercial, I, I do have an issue with that. It would be the, the largest highway commercial rezone in Glen County for missing, ever?
Not ever, but long-
No?
I would say far away from it.
Yes, yes.
The property owners are farmers, mechanics.
My favorite kind of people.
Right, so they didn't know exactly how much was needed for, if there needed to be a D cell, XL lane and all of that. So his proposal to the surveyor was for them to go back 450 feet. So he made an extra depth. So, you know, it could be smaller amount, but he did want to try to do the road frontage. If, if the depth is, you know, too much, that could be adjusted.
But, but as, as you and I talked before, it feels to me as if there's no plan. It's just, it's, we don't, we don't know, I mean, we're, we're just being asked to vote on a tremendous amount of acreage to become highway commercial without having anything to go there, and it's like Mr. Boatright said, we can't go back once we, you know, once we do it. We approved a big, huge commercial area, not knowing what's going in there.
Ms. Lester?
Yes.
How much exactly frontage on 82 is there with this 92 acres? How many feet?
Twelve twenty-three on the left parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Add them together here. It looks like 2,900 on the right side.
Twelve hundred, 2,900, so-
And again, the majority of the acreage that takes it up is that right, the third parcel, which is all trees. And he, and he just threw that in there as a, because initially, we only talked about parcel A and parcel B, is what I call it.
And the solar panels is, be a perfect area for additional solar panels out there, but I didn't know if they were interested in-
That, that particular one is not, and we've talked to a couple others. I'm from Houston County, and we have numerous solar panels along 75 and also along Highway 247 at the back of the Robbins Air Force Base.
Okay.
So I've tried with them also, just to see.
So a little bit over 3,000-foot frontage when you combine them two. Okay.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
I hate to tell you this, because you came as far as you did.
That's fine.
I'm not going to vote for this, but I would like for you to tell the owners of this property. I'm not opposed to it being commercial, but we need some kind of a plan. We need some kind of an idea of what it's going to be used for. I'm just not going to be able to support this. And, you know, I'm only one vote now. I have fellow commissioners, and they can do what's, but I'm just stating to you, I, I will help you. If you come back with a plan, Neil Boatright, District 1 Commissioner, will help you the best to my abilities, but tonight, I just can't support rezoning 97 acres without a plan.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just because I can't see that well. How, the access that you have between this far right and the next parcel, how, how wide of an access is there? Right, yeah, right there, I'm just curious. I assume that's access for the blueberry farm property?
Yeah, it currently is a double gate, and I believe there are eight-foot gates, that it's just basically a dirt road.
No, I mean, but how much is surveyed out to be the access for back there? How wide is that strip?
We're, we're going there, we're trying our sixty feet.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if it's our job to make, try to propose it smaller without the owner here, but-
To the best of my ability, to the best of my understanding, I am familiar with this property. I backed the blueberry farm, not the green one, that's not, they're creating access to the old blueberry farm. See the lines?
Right.
And the roads?
Right.
If you look over about 200 or 300 feet to the left, that's actually the road to the blueberry farm.
Yeah, but this would be the kind of legal access, right? Yeah.
The actual road to the blueberry farm is on the left side of the-
Right.
-solar panels.
Gotcha.
It's Old Telephone House Road.
Do you feel like you're in a position, I'm a real estate agent too, so I wouldn't feel this way, but I mean, if this commission, you know, voted and wanted to do something that is a variation of what is proposed to your, you know, less, maybe less depth, you know, are you empowered legally to, to speak on their behalf and say, "Yep, I'm good with that," or is that something that the owner really needs to be involved in the conversation?
No, and again, like I said, they, they don't know anything about this survey part and the laws of what they can and cannot do, so he just went with the 450 feet back thinking that was enough for whatever needed to be done.
So would you be willing to go back to him and say, "You need a better plan"?
Okay, so do you, does he actually need to have somebody that's interested in the property for that commercial, or?
Maybe.
Let me just say this, if I owned that property and had that large of investment in Glen County, I probably would be engaging on some level a land engineer to better understand what might be the best way to approach this kind of large property. I worry, just sitting here, is not that it's my problem, that by rezoning it to highway commercial, you may act, that big of a piece, that you may hurt the ability to develop it a different way that might be a more feasible use than, I mean, sometimes I think people go, "Ooh, okay, let's make it highway commercial, you know, we can build Walmart, we can do this," where in reality, you maybe do want it more of it FA, because FA in Glen County, you could do a whole lot of stuff, where it might be different compared to other, and then you have the ability to come back and say, "We're going to do this part residential," whether they do a planned development text now, or maybe just make the commercials smaller, that might be actually a better approach. But I really think, talking, even us doing this, every, you know, every, we're not the experts on it either, you know, really having a land engineer to, you know, that does all this, the planned development texts and do all those things would probably be helpful, at least consulting, I think. Not that that's my business necessarily, but I think that's probably some of our concerns is, and, and that the highway commercial is too big, just kind of carte blanche with the surrounding, I mean, I would think there's possibility for industrial. I mean, I think, you know, there's, long-term, you know, you just want to know, you know, what the possibilities are, I think, in, in Glen County.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny ZM 5242.
Second.
All in favor? But we want you to come back with a plan.
Yes, and I do want to say, these guys are awesome.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I might too, just to remind the applicant, that's a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, they'll make the final decision on that application.
Yep.
You're right. We're not the last word.
Yep.
Okay, next up on our agenda is Fancy Bluff Road West Project. It's a zoning map amendment. Chris is here.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a rezone for two parcels in the, on Fancy Bluff Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately nine acres from forest agriculture to one-family residential R12, to allow for a one-family residential subdivision. Parcel 0200736 has a mobile home, and the other parcel, 0200737, is vacant. The proposed maximum under what they have planned for the property is 40 units or a density of 2.08, and they have a maximum in the zoning district of three. Right here are both the parcels. Right here is the proposed rezoned area. The proposed maximum under what they have planned for the property is 40 units or a density of 2.08, and they have a maximum in the zoning district of three. Right here are both the parcels. Right here is the proposed rezoned area. And here are your possible actions.
Commissioners? Questions of Mr. Postal? Excuse me, of Chris, I'm sorry.
Chris, the only, the only highway, major highway entrance is from 82 on to Fancy Bluff West. Is that correct? There's, there's not any other way to get to this property other than there?
It's off of 303.
I meant 303, I'm sorry. 303. I apologize.
Yes, sir, 303 is the only proposed, well, it would be the only access currently.
Okay. Have, um, have you had any letters to the county in, in opposition to this?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I did have one comment from a neighbor when I posted the sign, and they said they would speak with the property owner on that.
Any other questions of Mr. Postal?
Mr. Postal?
Gosh, I cannot, I'm sorry, Chris. I have Mr. Postal's name in my head today. Okay. Mr. Hightower is here to speak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you again for your time tonight. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering here, requesting that we rezone this property from FA to R-12. Just a quick backstory as to how we landed on R-12 is what we did, is we just looked at the surrounding neighborhoods to see what was kind of in line with the existing land use, and that's where we landed on that R-12 number. They said that the zoning was 40, it's probably going to be closer to 30 once we actually do the full design of the roads, detention, everything else. But that's the, the requested use that we're looking for tonight and available for any questions.
How many units per acre?
Uh, right now, it's looking at two. That's what they said, two or less. Two, yeah. And so it's actually going to be slightly less than that because...
That doesn't sound right, though. Two?
I can run the numbers real fast, but it's, they're 12,000 square foot lots, according to Glen County ordinances. Grab this exhibit real fast. Actually, that, that is correct, because there's a canal right there where it takes out quite a bit of the usage of that land. So it's actually looking like 1.57, once we actually put everything in there. But two is where it's being requested at right now.
So there's going to be 1.57 units per acre?
Correct. There's 19 acres, and we're looking at about 30 units. Because there's actually, the reason, another reason is there's actually a really large wetland pocket right here as well. That takes out a good, it's hard to see right here. If you print it out, there's a, in your packet, you probably had a, actually, no, you don't get a print for a rezoning, but for cycling, you would. Right here is a large wetland pocket, and so it takes out quite a bit. And so what we did is we designed out a way to have an entrance road here, as well as here, so we'd have two points of access to the subdivision. But this wetland right here, as well as this ditch system right here, takes out quite a bit of the usability of that land.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Oh, also, I'm not sure which neighbor he's, he asked about, asked a question. I did speak with the adjacent landowner on this line right here. Other than that, there's highway commercial on this side.
That's Mr. Greg Crawson.
Yes, sir.
He didn't have an issue. I mean, if Greg would have had a problem, he'd be here tonight.
Yes, sir. And he spoke with the owners as well when they, when they bought the property. Thank you.
The chamber has, uh, doesn't have so many people in it now. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in favor of this? Please come to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition of this rezoning? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, this public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept ZM 5229 as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Perry Lane Road rezone, and Mr. Postal, you know, I kept calling Chris, Mr. Postal, while you were gone. Mr. Postal is here for the county.
Uh, this is an application to rezone 2220 Perry Lane Road from Forest Agricultural to highway commercial. The site is currently occupied by a district office of the Southeast Baptist Association and, uh, which is a non-conforming use in Forest Agricultural, and the intended use is commercial office space for Yates Astro Termite and Pest. This is the zoning map showing that this is the last remaining FA parcel in that section of Perry Lane Road. All the remainder of the sites are general commercial, highway commercial, or freeway commercial. And this is the concept plan showing they're just going to use the existing Southeast Baptist building. These are your options for the rezoning request.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Postal?
Just out of curiosity, I think this is pretty far down Perry Lane, but with the discussion we had in the last meeting about traffic issues, are any of the proposed solutions to Perry Lane going to extend this far in any way that you're aware of in terms of the traffic study that's being done?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Because Capital Square, I mean, the Capital Square stuff comes out down here.
Just thought it might be the time to, the county was thinking they needed more right of way or anything else to discuss it, but they got a lot of right of way.
Yeah, as you can see, there's quite a lot of right of way on Perry Lane.
So we have someone here from Robert Civil Engineering to speak?
No, we actually have quite a few people that can speak on this project.
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, standing in for Brian Hunt, who is the authorized agent on this project, here to request that you approve this application as presented. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the owner of the property and the applicant as well for the future use. They're all available.
Do you guys have any questions of Jake Hightower? Okay, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the chamber. Okay. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak against this project? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Did I misunderstand that there was someone coming to speak?
They just don't want to. It's closed.
No, I'm, I'm just, if you want to come, and, and I just, someone said there were a lot of people here to speak, so that's what I was waiting for. Okay.
They're here to address questions, but...
Okay, so hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve ZM 5231 as presented. Second.
I have one more question for Mr. Postal. Man, he's fast tonight. So you said the existing building is non-conforming, but it was permitted at the time it was built to be a office complex? Mr. Postal?
I didn't go do the research, but I wouldn't doubt it.
You wouldn't doubt it?
That it was permitted, even though...
Okay, okay.
I'm sure it probably is permitted as a, as a church, which is a permitted use in Forest Agriculture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just making sure there's no... Yeah, I'm just making sure you don't have any building permit concerns about it now being commercial.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That was unanimous, right? Motion is, it's been approved. Thank you. Right. Commissioners, we have two more items before us on the agenda, and Ms. Leaf is going to address those.
So the next one up is a public hearing for zoning code, the next two are zoning code amendments. Uh, the first one is TA 5262, and, hold on, let me skip past these, because we skipped order here. Okay, here we go. So TA 5262, this is a proposed zoning code amendment regarding the limited industrial zoning district. Uh, this is a county-initiated proposal, so this was initiated by the county commission. Uh, they did hold a work session on September 20th of 2022 and directed staff to work on drafting this ordinance and begin the public hearing process with the planning commissions. Uh, so this, what is this regard to is adding proposed uses to the limited industrial zoning that would include school offering, instruction, and art, music, dance, drama, gymnastics, cheerleading, or similar cultural activity, and then also adding gym or fitness studio as permitted uses. This has come about because we have had some interest from businesses that, that have those kind of businesses that look at some of these larger warehouse spaces in the, in the LI zone as, because they do have the taller ceiling heights, large area for those kind of activities. So there has been some requests to have those uses, you know, in the zoning district. So that is why this is before you. So these are the existing LI uses, and, um, and then here is the proposed changes, just adding the uses that I just mentioned. The Island's Planning Commission, this does need to go to both planning commissions and the board before it can be approved. So the Island's Planning Commission did hold a public hearing October 25th, and 70 recommended to the Board of Commissioners approve of the ordinance as presented. And these are your possible actions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie?
Yes.
It's probably my ignorance, but why, why are we changing this ordinance? For what reason?
So, so currently, the way the permitted uses are written in this code is that they are really limited to what's specifically shown in this list. So I know we, we had a, a recent business action, she's here this evening, that had looked at, you know, could this fit under a vocational school? You know, could this, you know, fit under an office use? And, but the way that it's written is that, that we really needed to have something that specifically allowed, you know, fitness, or cheerleading, or, or gymnastics to have, you know, to actually allow that use. And so it came about because, you know, we did have someone apply for an occupational tax permit, we were not allowed to, or we weren't able to issue it based on the zoning issue. So that's kind of where that came about, and I know Mr. Worley was involved in drafting this. Is there anything he wants to add to that as well?
Commissioners, just to, to back up what Stephanie said, that, um, she said there's a business owner who, who wanted to operate a business in an area that's limited industrial. That use wasn't allowed in the building that she wanted to put it into, and the board asked staff to draft this amendment to address that issue.
So basically, Mr. Worley, this is just housekeeping?
Well, in the sense that, you know, the board said that they would like to see these uses added to the amendment, to the permitted uses for this zoning district, and just ask staff to process that forward.
The Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Can you share specifically where the property is that brought this issue?
Sure, and I believe she may, she may provide public comment during the public hearing section too, but Key Drive, Key Drive Circle, or Key Circle Drive is the area that, that she was looking to, to go to, into. There is, it was pretty much all limited industrial in that area, really a mix of, you know, kind of contractors and some different uses there. There was a CrossFit gym that had, had gone in near that area that some years ago, when they wanted to operate in that space, they did actually rezone from limited industrial to planned development to allow the CrossFit gym. So there is, you know, similar use that's near there, but that was a path they, they took, and this, you know, that could have been a similar path with her situation, but when our commission looked at it, you know, they thought this, this would be a use that'd be, you know, fine to have in the limited industrial district countywide.
So, um, just being the troublemaker here today. So my only concern is it's going to impact places like the McBride Industrial Park and some of the other industrial areas where, this may be a little far-fetched, tax dollars were used to develop those parcels and parks, if I am not misspeaking, that was funneled through the EDA, and I just don't know that that, you know, those funds were done to do that, to have, I love gyms and gymnastics, and not that I do any of those things, you know, just, that's my only concern, is you're opening the box to then have a great industrial building that was in some way or another supported by tax dollars to develop those areas that is now not being used for industrial use. I don't know if there's any other way to do it, but that would be my concern.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to come to the podium and state their name and address the question? I've been watching her ways.
Ever so patiently.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kalana Norris, and I am the Gym Owner and Program Director of Firehouse Chair Athletics. I have also been Ms. Stephanie Leaf and Mr. Chris and Mr. Postal's biggest headache, probably, for the last six months. This is not my first go-around with trying to get an occupational tax order, uh, application pushed through with this particular address. I was met with the same discourse as far as the LI zoning district is concerned. If you have any questions or concerns about why I specifically chose this area, I would be more than happy to answer them for you, but other than that, I would hope that you would approve this based off what Ms. Stephanie said, because it definitely does cover a majority of the reasoning why this is. From my understanding, in the particular area that I'm looking in, I don't think any tax funding was used. I kind of did my research on that, and also to clear the air, I am located on Key Drive, the CrossFit gym is located on Key Circle. However, there are several other businesses that are already in the LI district that had to go through the same rezoning process, that spent thousands of dollars for something that could have been mitigated, because this ordinance has been here since the 70s? Am I correct? I might be incorrect about that. But it's been here for a longstanding time with no one to amend it.
Challenge it.
Yeah, challenge it or amend it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Change? Is there anyone here in the chamber who would like to speak against this ordinance change? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve TA 5262 as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Are we, are we all? I'm trying to sound like anybody down here.
So that's unanimous, then? So that's unanimous then, for all of, okay.
All right, and Ms. Leaf has the next presentation for us.
So this next one does have several different options, so I'll go through those. But just when you take your vote, just kind of be aware that we would like you to mention which option you are comfortable with. So this is TA 5263, this is a planned development district ordinance amendment. Some of you may have been on the commission when some of these came through. What this pertains to is, as you know, in a planned development text, to planned development district, there is a master plan that gets approved with the planned development text. Some are more detailed than others, I mean, a lot that you're seeing more recently are not as detailed. However, a number of years ago, there were quite a few that were very detailed. They looked basically like a final subdivision plat. All the roads were laid out, the lots were laid out, all common areas were very specified. And the way that our planned development district ordinance reads is that any changes to lot layout, road alignment, access points, anything like that actually triggers a full rezone, a full amendment to the planned development. So that means, you know, planning commission review and a recommendation as well as the Board of Commissioners. So a few of these projects got, took a little bit to kind of get through the process. If some of you may remember these, there's a few examples. What had happened was there were some, you know, these planned development texts had been approved, you know, 15, 20 years ago. You know, this is one example of Tanglewood. On the top left is what the master plan shows. So this is what had been approved for the planned development text, and that's what should have been adhered to when they developed. You know, they later came in and subdivided it, and for whatever reason, you know, the master plan had not been followed. And so they ended up developing it into what you see on the bottom right. It looks very different than what you see up above. So there's the, up above left, there's a series of different ponds, a different layout. What's on the right, you have a large, you know, retention pond. And so this technically should have triggered a master plan amendment. It had not, and so they developed it in this fashion. And so, you know, flash forward about 15 years, they come in in the last couple of years wanting to develop Phase Two, and staff looks at it and says, it does not comply with the master plan. You know, you either need to comply with the master plan or amend it through the planned development text amendment process. And because they had already constructed this first phase, you know, there's no way that they could tie into utilities and do their road layout based on their master plan any longer. So their only choice was to amend their master plan through, through rezon process. So we had a couple of projects, Adams Wood was another one. Majestic Oaks was another one that was a little more recent. So just some examples of where this scenario played out. So based on this, our commission, this is a county-initiated amendment as well. Our commission asked us to take a look at, you know, is there a shortened process that we could implement that would handle unique situations like this? Staff did some research, and it's not all-inclusive, but when we looked at it, you know, we realized there was approximately 20 plus or minus developments that kind of fell into this category. So it wasn't a large number. We have over 400 planned development districts in the county. So it was a small number that may, you know, that may kind of fall into this scenario. So what staff did was take a look at some potential changes to the planned development district section that would, you know, allow for, allow for a shortened process for very, very specific changes. So only if there were changes to street access or alignment, location of public or common areas, location of internal collector streets, or location of points of access to public rights of way. If there was any change in density, any change in uses, that would have to go through the full rezon process. It would not, it would not be eligible for this shortened process. So three options that you have before you to look at. Option one is that, again, just these specific changes to a master plan could be approved by the community development director. So it'd be a purely administrative process. Option two would be an administrative process as well, but the community development director would need the concurrence of the county manager before signing off on it. And then option number three is the master plan changes would require one public hearing by the Board of Commissioners and would not require a planning commission public hearing. So it would skip over the planning commission public hearing that you typically have with a full rezon and go straight to one public hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners. The other couple of changes that were made is that there'd be a 30-day timeframe for staff to make this determination. So when an applicant submits and says, hey, I feel like I fall under these specific, you know, I'm just changing my street access, can I go through this process? You know, we would need to let them know within 30 days whether they can use this or whether we, we would have, they would have to go through the full rezon process. So in your packet, you have the full, you know, text of these changes, one, two, and three. The Island's Planning Commission did consider this on October 25th. They held a public hearing, and they opted to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of option three, and that is the one that requires one public hearing by the Board of Commissioners. And so these are your possible actions, as I mentioned at the start, because we do have the three options. If you are inclined to recommend approval of the ordinance, if you could state, you know, which option that you're recommending in your motion. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Worley can answer questions as well on this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Stephanie, I want to make sure I heard you clearly. You said there's about 20 of these in the county? What part of the county, 99 area, 82? Is there a general vicinity where most of these are at?
Yeah, when we did our research, most of them were 99, Exit 29 area. There were, there were a couple in that area, like Clearwater was one, you know, down off of 17. There is, I think, one on St. Simon's Island that we found. And again, this is just our initial research. There may be others that pop up that we just didn't find in our initial research, so it's not an all-exclusive or inclusive list. But yeah, 99, Exit 29 was really where most of them were. Yeah, thank you.
So with the different options, so just so I make sure I understand, let's say I bought in a PD community, and I thought a residential lot was going to be backing up to my property. But now they've decided to relay it out, and there's going to be a street behind my property that would fall under.
That would.
Yeah.
It would fall under that, yes.
Makes sense?
Any other questions?
Those are the only reasons for the change. In regard to Tanglewood, that was very intense what they did. More than change. That's not what this.
Yeah, so they, they could. So this would be an example, as long as the, and I'm not sure offhand whether the density changed at all. So, you know, if the density changes, then they definitely have to go through the full rezon. But if the density is exactly what was shown on the master plan, the uses are exactly what's in the PD text, and they go from, you know, the one on the left to the one on the right, that could be done through, through this shortened process. Abbreviated process, whatever the term might be.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in favor of this? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition of this? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
My name's Jeff Kilgore. And in the future, I should have learned a lesson a long time ago. You can't do two things at once, and I apologize to all of you. I got off the schedule. And so it would be merciful, and if I'm not talking about the item that's on the agenda, you could always interrupt me and say, Mr. Kilgore, you're bozo, you don't know what you're talking about. But on this particular instance, I think I know what I'm talking about. And I go back to Commissioner Edgy's invocation in the people's business, and that's what you're here for. That's what you signed up for when you put your name up to be appointed to this commission. And Commissioner Newspoint is extremely well-made. And Commissioner Boatwright's mentioned earlier about, you're all about property rights. And the people who have bought into these developments do have a right to know. And I really don't understand, what's the difficulty? If I buy something and it's a PD and it's non-compliance, what's the difference between that and any other new development? For a developer to simply go to staff and submit to a planning commission something that can be approved and go forward so that the developer can convert their investment to profit? Why do you have to fast-forward anything? And what happens to all those people that are already there that have bought into, and the developer 15, 20 years ago didn't comply, and somehow our staff didn't do the inspections, and the non-compliance was never detected? I just think that you have to consider those people who rely on you to protect their property and their property values. I have done an open records request. The chairman of the county commission, I think instituted this proposed change. And he said that there's only just a very few applications that will be affected. Ms. Leaf says 20. I did an open records request. I asked for every one that the staff knows that would be affected by this amendment. And I got a list of 23 applications or PDs. And this statement from county staff, which says, "The list does not include all of the current PD texts that could be regulated if the ordinance amendment is adopted." And so what I think you have here is a proverbial slippery slope. And you're going to have maybe a lot more than just 20. But this, if I'm correct, and Ms. Leaf, please don't hesitate to correct me. But things like 50 Oaks would be able to implement an exit off the property and directly to Frederica Road, right? And Lake College is the same thing, where there is not currently something that impacts the traffic on Frederica Road, but if this amendment goes through, can't that be done? And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think there's some very dangerous situations that can be created if this amendment is approved. And so there's, I would ask that you get a list of all of the PD developments that would come under this amendment, and attach that to any amendment that you pass. Make sure that you know what, I mean, I don't mean this in a pejorative way, but make sure you know what you're doing when you approve something, that there's not a lot of unintended consequences. You'll deprive every future planning commission the opportunity to correct situations that may affect property owners in England County if you approve this. It's done, it's like Commissioner Boatwright said, once it's approved, it's done. There ain't no going back, as we say in the South. So I would ask that you, at a minimum, limit this amendment to a specific list of applications that are on file. So that you know, or you reject the amendment. Thank you very much.
There's only one other person remaining in the chamber. Do you want to come up and speak? Okay, Commissioners? Oh. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
I have another question, hypothetical. So obviously, some PD texts are very detailed, and some are not in terms of layout and those sort of things. So I don't know if this applies, but for an example, not to freak out everybody on St. Simon's. You know, we've heard for years that Hampton Plantation has a bunch, I don't know what a bunch is, but we've heard a lot of undeveloped units in their PD text. And the only way, because of the way they developed, that they could use those unused units in their PD text would be if they used golf course property for those units. Would this allow them to put in roads and use the golf course property for those units? If it was approved by staff?
So we want, I mean, there could be a scenario where, I think the only thing with that, though, is probably looking back at the PD text of what, what the density is. But yeah, because I think what you're saying, there may be unused in the PD.
That's what has been.
And so is the density remaining the same.
I haven't read it, so I don't, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah.
And on number three, so I'll lean towards number three if I would do any of them. But on number three, do the, if you have a public hearing, do the property owners under the same guidelines as a rezoning request have to be noticed?
They would, yes. Yep, so, yeah, within 200 feet of the proposed rezon area.
And Commissioner, new to your hypothetical, I'm not familiar with the master plan for that particular development, but if their master plan shows areas that are as a golf course, as being used as a golf course, and then they say, oh, now we want to use this for residential units or something like that, that would be a change in use, which would not be allowed under this, any of these.
Even though they might have unused developmental units in their PD text.
Right, but if their master plan shows that area as being used for something other than residential, and they want to convert it to residential, they wouldn't be allowed to use this process.
I'm really curious. How much time are we saving here by doing this? Because that's what it seems like we're going to save time for something. I'm not sure, and I don't normally ever agree with this man, but I'm leaning toward what he has had to say. Just when you said the thing about 50 Oaks and a road out to Frederica, yes. I see it the same way you do, but I just, I don't understand really the need even for this.
So with the options one and two, which are administrative, I mean, that could save someone, you know, several months of process. Okay, so with number three, though, two to four weeks it could save. I mean, potentially at the low end, a two-week savings, because you're not, we wouldn't have to notice for a planning commission meeting, but I'd say conservatively, about a month it would save.
I mean, I, I think. Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, there's been some nightmares, obviously majestic, you know, some different things that have been very difficult for the staff and the commissioners and us to deal with. So I get part of that, and it's very cost-intensive and time. You think how many times we've talked about majestic oats, right or wrong? You know, a lot of that, I think, is because it wasn't done, and then it got chopped into pieces and sold and all that sorts of stuff.
And then developed outside of the plan.
Right, right. Or one person said, well, nobody said I couldn't take all those units, so I did, or whatever it might have been, which I get kind of the, maybe the motivation on that piece. But I think once you record something with the specifics that some of these have, I mean, it's, to me, it's very different than being vague in your PD text, because then I'm a property, I buy something in it. I'll, it's pretty vague, so they might could do that right next door to me, or it might be on the other side. But if it's very specific, I think there's the expectation that those specifics will be followed. They've been recorded and, you know, public record, but that's what they're going to do, so I don't know. I lean towards number three or none at all. I lean towards number three, or none at all, but I don't know that it matters.
I, I agree with Sherri. I very seldom agree with Mr. Kilgore, but I just, I just see some real issues with this thing. I mean, you know, what we're trying to do is just kind of take a shortcut to some degree and just cut the public out. And the public has a right, I mean, to weigh in on these different issues, especially if it's going to affect their life, and, you know, and their property, et cetera. And so, you know, I understand if we're, if we're in the business of saving money, then we can do it a lot better than, you know, not holding public hearings and things like that, that the public can get up and speak at. So I just, I can't support this at all, no matter what the options are, so.
Well, Commissioner Strickland, you led me right into what I got to say. I believe that it was brought up about unintended consequences, because I've hollered and screamed about unintended consequences so many times as a Planning Commissioner. And I'm going to vote no on this amendment, just because I'm ignorant to the fact, and I haven't studied enough, Mr. Kilgore, about all the unintended consequences. And I think it would be, I don't know what word I'm looking for, but I think it would not be good for me to holler about unintended consequences on one subject, and this has been brought up. There are all kinds of unintended consequences. And like I said, I just have not educated myself enough to vote on this either way. So I don't know if I need to vote no, or just abstain. I suspect I probably need to vote just no. So I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this.
Commissioners, anything else?
Ready? Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny TA 5263.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Commissioners, just for clarity's sake, so does everyone understand that motion to mean, you're, you're recommending they not pass any of the three options, correct?
Right.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of denial?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting that we've had such a pleasure at tonight.
You hadn't had pleasure at a meeting in a long time.